We have a quorum, all board members are present, so we'll do a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, um, welcome everyone, so we will start with open forum, public input. Anybody wants to talk?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
I'm Abby Hobbich, if you don't know who I am. Um, I am a softball coach here for the summer teams. I have an A-team group here right now. Um, I'm also on the PYBSA board. I'm also a member of the LMD's board, and that's our league that we've been playing in this summer. And, um, on behalf of the players and the parents and all that, we are here to ask for the, um, letter of intent to sponsor softball as a high school sport here at Parkston. And I sent a letter, and, um, in that, we talked about, um, how many teams that are in the high school sport right now. Um, this is the very first year, and they were intending to have about 20, and they already have 48 that participated this first year. And what we're seeing in the league that we play in is that, um, right now, there's only four of us teams in the A-team level of these high school girls. And some teams that typically would play in the league, um, are choosing not to play anymore. They, they played the spring season and they're not playing. Um, and so I feel like, as an opportunity for these girls to continue to play at that age, that this would be the next step, is if we sanction high school softball and kind of play with the teams that we've been playing in, in the league, and, you know, play some other teams, and give them the opportunity to play as a high school sport. And mainly, I'm here just to answer any questions that you have. Did you guys get a chance to look at the letter?
Mm-hmm.
Um, there's some other details in there. But mainly, just answer any questions and see what your thoughts are.
Okay. Does anybody have questions, or had you reviewed it? Had you had a chance to?
Mrs. Hobbich, just clarify exactly what it is that you are seeking. Clarify that.
Okay. So, we do not need any money. Um, we will fundraise, uh, we'll figure that all ourselves. We have, you know, we've already got some uniforms going, we've got equipment. Uh, we've talked to the city about using facilities, um, so yeah, we do not intend to ask for any money.
Anybody else?
Just to be able to participate.
Breakdown of your kids, then?
Breakdown? Um, so, through a survey this spring, um, we're sitting at, uh, about 20 junior high through high school. We have, um, two seniors, three to four juniors, um, two sophomores, five freshmen, uh, three eighth graders, um, I guess a combo with the eighth grade, seventh grade, and sixth grade, we'd be at 13. So that would be a total of 20, 29-ish. That actually includes this. So that includes our 12-U team, which has some sixth graders on there. So.
So you would have two teams, like a JV?
We'd have a JV varsity. Varsity, mm-hmm. Um.
Is that a thing right now in the programs?
Yes.
Are they playing two games, or they just playing one game?
Um, it depends on, they, they start that varsity one first, and then like with weather or, um, you know, issues like that, they, they make that varsity one go first, so they get it in, and then the JV will play after, typically. But Tyndall has JV varsity, um, I know Hanson does, I think even Avon. They might be shared, you know, like some play both, you know, but. Number-wise, I know Tyndall, I just texted their coach today, they had 21 on their team. Um, Hanson had like 16, 17. So we're sitting right there about same numbers as some of these towns around us.
So what would the plan be for coaching?
Um, right now, I would volunteer my time to be a coach, and I think we have some help. Um, I'll seek help and hope it works.
And you said that you think that the summer programs will kind of go away because spring ball kind of is taking precedent?
Yeah, not necessarily go away. Um, I think some kids are choosing not to play, um, and some want to continue to play, so they'll go, like in Tyndall there, some on some Yankton teams and things like that.
Do like club ball in the summer if they really want to, sure.
Travel teams.
I took the privilege of calling Abby ahead of time, and, uh, so she's reuniting some of the stuff she told me that they were gonna volunteer their time. Bats, tell me how bats work.
Oh, a lot of the kids have their own bats. Um, the PYBSA organization, I don't think we have bought a bat for a team in several years.
Tell me about the uniforms.
Uniforms, um, so we had to purchase through, um, so our numbers are growing. Our, our A- and under team has like 22 kids out for the softball side. And so the new ones that we ordered through the organization last year kind of got wiped out with them, and we even had to order some more, so we kind of scrambled, and we decided those older girls, let's go out and get some uniforms, and, um, so a good number of them already have them that they purchased on their own already, so.
Tell me some towns around here that are in high school girl softball.
Okay, so, starting west, we got Avon, Wagner, Tyndall, um, Hanson, Scotland, Menno are co-op. Fiber Curly.
Gabriel.
Gabriel Valen.
Elsester.
Elsester.
Beersford.
Winter.
Winter.
So it might be easy to say who isn't?
Yeah, um, Ethan doesn't have one yet, um.
Okay.
Mount Vernon's getting pretty close. I would say if not next year, the year after, they have it.
And you cleared it with the city to use facilities there?
Yes, did. I went to the city council and asked for permission to use facility.
Abby came to the city council meeting, and we said we would treat them no different than spring baseball. If weather does not permit, we will not open, turn the water on. Darren and I have, um, several, um, high school games this year. The contracts we get from the school, for us as umpires and the players, it says cup dress. There are no facilities.
Any facilities on site, depending, pending weather changing, you know.
Yes.
First game was supposed to be March 25th. This year, you know, there was still a fight for the snow in the field. So the first year was very trying for everybody.
And I, I will say, I was selected to do the high school tournament in Aberdeen. It was, for the first year of the tournament, it was very well-run. The fan support probably had local games, not regular season, not so, you know, you get 25, 30 people. But up at Aberdeen, um, I would say each team had 50, 60 fans that, that followed the sport. And, um, very impressed with the talent. Abby's team has played some of those teams, and if you drive through the park over here, you can see in the last five, six years, we've had three state champs in summer ball. And the league is very well-represented itself, so. But as far as the city, um, yes, they did go along with the use of the facility.
What about the equipment, like catcher's gear, is that city-owned, or is that Parkston?
That's the.
Baseball use softball association, is that separate?
That is separate, and I've, uh, got approval through the board there to use any equipment that we already use, yeah.
Some is individually owned.
Yeah, right.
As far as, um, maintenance on the field and stuff, what Darren and I have seen traveling, they do, I don't know if you call them jamborees, but they, they'll play quadrangulars, triangulars, whoever hosts that, um, I guess I never found out if there's like a entry fee or whatever. You pay $200 and you play five games, and the host town takes care of the field, um, pays the umpires, and, and so forth, so. That would cut down on field maintenance as far as chalk, um, lights if needed, and, and so forth, so.
So when would the season start?
I think it starts about the same time, track does.
Oh, like Darren said, we had.
The first game was March 20th, scheduled for March 22nd.
Baseball?
Softball.
Softball, oh, okay.
This last, this last spring.
Oh, okay.
They run it the same as basketball, volleyball. When the season's over, I think the last game is, they into May sometime, and, or May 23rd this year.
The 23rd was.
Sodak 16.
It was in your packet, uh, 23, 24 season, first allowable practice is March 18th, first allowable contest is March 23rd. Cut-off date for regular season contests will be end by May 18th. Sodak contest date, May 21st, and state meet, May 30, 31st, and June 1st for 23, 24.
And I think the classifications would be the same as any other sport. I, I would assume we would be with Wagner.
It was different this year.
Their classification numbers are different, um, the thresholds are different. Softball has its own, um, numbers, but, um, we would, we're small enough that we would not play in that Class A competition. It would be in Class B. There's 14 teams in Class B and 19 teams in Class A. I don't suspect that doesn't mean you can't play some of those, like Wagner, or, um.
Turn the time into Class B.
Class B, yes.
Freeman played some Class A, um, double A play day, and it, it goes on.
Powerpoint.
Powerpoint, everything else.
No, it's nine through 11.
What, girls?
No.
No?
No. Don't ask me why. The only one that's, the only sport that is specific is males is the football.
Oh, okay.
Other than that, it's nine through 11 enrollment in, in your high school, applied to all sports, with the exception of football.
Another coach I was talking to thought they looked at how many teams there were and tried to divide it into kind of three equal groups, somewhat equal groups, and that's kind of where they set the cutoff then from there, to give them enough in each, um, each, uh, class, I guess.
But they do two years, so the first year, two-year rotation, I'm assuming, is like. It'll be set for that for two years.
Okay, I was.
Your, your, well.
Two-year alignment period.
Two-year alignment, yes, two-year.
I do know we're at the high end of that being, um, we were potentially thinking maybe co-op or something with someone nearby to get a few more numbers, and, um, I think we looked at even Ethan would maybe put us over A, which.
And I think the, the coach lines up the games. Those are not set by the state to line up.
No, it's your A.D. that does that, but.
Okay.
And, and along with your co, with your coach. I mean, they collaborate on that.
Yeah.
That's the same thing as the rest of our sports. The only sport that South Dakota Activity Association does is football.
Oh, okay, alright, thank you.
And so then, would you practice like baseball does? Would you, have you talked to Adam about using the school? Like, cause they practice indoor some of the time, right?
We would probably want to, to start out when it's cold outside, um, so I feel like we could probably coordinate that. Um, you know, we talked about maybe.
Hopefully in another year, when that thing's built over here, we'll want to worry about it.
One year, yeah.
We can make it work. Even, um, my summer team, we went in there, I think it was in April. I actually did a couple, um, pitching sessions with our young girls in there before, like, late April. Of course, maybe it was even May. Um, but yeah, we would probably want to use the facility when we can.
You said, Ethan, are you looking at co-op-ing, or are you looking at just us?
Um, still thinking about it. I don't know. So this summer, we have two Ethan girls playing with us on our team. Last summer, we, and we have a few others from other towns. We have one from Dakota Christian. Um, we had one at Lake Andes that will be in district, which is nice. Um, one from Mount Vernon, and one from Tripp. So knowing we can't take all of them, you know, and trying to figure out where we want to be. Um, I think if we do decide to co-op, then we have to assume that we're probably gonna be an A, so do we try to get a couple more of the kids that have been playing? Um, the two from Ethan are new this year. The, uh, the ones prior have been playing with us for, um, at least one to two years. Um, so that's kind of hard too. I would love to take them all and keep them together, but I know that's not gonna work out that way, but. Yeah, I don't, I don't know. The co-op, we'll have to see. We also have younger, you know, more numbers in those younger ages too, so we may not need them. I know other towns use junior high kids, and that's not a problem either. So I think something to keep thinking about, and maybe as we, if, if it's decided yes, then well, kind of have to figure that out.
But you thought it was sustainable, Abby, as far as the numbers?
What was that?
You thought the softball could be sustainable with the numbers down the road?
Yes, on our, yeah.
Classmen, underclassmen?
Yep. The 12-U has, um, 10, um, there's two that are a little bit older that are actually playing on a Mitchell team this year. So that's another two, so there's, um, and then, you know, like our younger groups, eight and tens are sitting at 39 kids total, in just two age divisions, so there'll be plenty of numbers coming through. And that's, I, I see it not only in our town, but the league itself, like, for the last, how many years, Tim, have we added teams to our league that want to play?
Well, this year alone, Flat asked to join our league. Mount Vernon had two teams join our league.
Armor has a ton of them.
Armor asked to join our league this year. Yankton, their rec teams play in our league, and I haven't told the board yet, but Howard has inquired about joining our league.
I think another Mitchell team was a look into.
And we have a Mitchell rec team as well in our league, yeah.
So I think overall, the sport and the state is growing. Um, it's interesting that South Dakota's the 50th state to add it as a sanctioned sport. Um, it's about time, I think. Um, you know, growing up in Iowa, I played it myself, and I think it's a great opportunity. It's, there's something to be said to play for your town, and, like, when we go to these tournaments, and Darren can say so too, that, um, it's not like hand-selected kids. It's like, it's our kids.
We've, we've been very successful in the last 10 years, and even beyond that, before I was ever involved, the teams that, that I took was 95 to 99% Parkston kids. When we created new uniforms, we didn't, a lot of club teams have a name, Riptide, or whatever, you know, Synergy. Our uniforms say Parkston, because I wanted to represent the town. Right now, I feel Abby and the girls want to represent the school. I, I don't think the numbers would do anything but grow, personally. There are, sometimes, summer softball is getting to the point where it's taking away from other things that kids are doing. Or if you put it in-season, they may prioritize it a little more.
There, there were girls this year that played softball, ran track, and golf. They did all three spring sports. There was one girl, I can't remember who it is, it has to be a Class B. When she was done with state softball, she was going to state golf tournament. That was her fifth state tournament she was in this year. So it's a great opportunity for softball. There is a lot of talent in Parkston and around the area, so.
Thank you for coming to share. Does anybody else have anything else they want to say? Okay, alright. Well, I think it's later, we're gonna discuss it a little later. You're welcome to stay through the meeting if you'd like, um, but we'll go on if you don't have anything further.
I don't have anything to really say, but softball's one of my favorite sports, and I would love to play it in season, because a lot of my out-of-town friends are always in their softball season, and I'm just sitting here watching them go to state tournaments, knocking defeat on.
Okay, alright, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Alright. Okay, uh, we will move to approve agenda changes to agenda.
The only thing there was versus publicizing the discussion item was letter H at the bottom, was not original, what was published, but it's in your agenda right now.
Approve the S.S. auxiliary placement contract?
H under discussion items.
Oh, sorry. Um, so H, Max LaBarre, Jerick, okay. Alright, so I need a motion to approve.
So move. Move by show, by sign by motion to approve the agenda with those changes. Any other discussion? Hearing none, no favor of staff. I have both same sign, motion carried.
I have no conflicts of interest listed, um, so we'll move to approve consent agenda. School board will discuss the minutes from the May meeting and pay claims submitted. We will approve the following contract and work agreement. James Bamer, K-5 physical education. Crystal Travis, grade four through eight, Old Elm Colony. Summer custodial help, Daryl Bray, pay at $14.74 per hour. Engaged Jidozi at $10.80. Items to be declared surplus can be found on the list included: The Head Start Program Agreement for Services Provided for Qualifying Students in the District's PK Program. The MOU with OHI for Educational Services for the 23-24 school year. Approve the contract with DSS for Compensation for Placement of Students at OHI. A is a, oh, go ahead.
Finish.
A is approved minutes, B is approved claims, C is approved contracts, D is clarify custodial staff if A. E is declare item surplus, F approve Head Start Agreement. G approve MOU with Our Home Incorporated. H approve DSS auxiliary placement contract.
Yeah, one thing, there, aren't we talking about the contract for the substitute teacher thing later? Should that be off of here?
Executive, is that what?
We will. No, I mean, it's on the agenda, as for where you're gonna adopt, as for policy towards student-teacher pay. So it's on there later, so.
So should we?
You don't have to.
I don't have, I'd like to table it until we talk about it officially.
And we can make it another motion then, at that time.
Correct.
We could come out and approve it then if we want.
Cause number one, I don't have a signed contract with Crystal yet, because we don't have a pay rate to put on it.
Oh, and the policy, right.
Okay, I'd like to take.
Okay.
I thought it was later on.
I, I had a question on, uh, a couple things on the, on the claims.
Okay. Do you want to move those off, John?
Uh.
Those separate motion, or you just need clarification?
I just need clarification.
Okay.
So, um, on outstanding checks, um, Craig, what are you told by Shane Christian? I, I see that we have a couple, it's not a deal, it's just more of a, I see we have something like about 2019.
Well, those have been reissued once already.
They have?
Yes. But see, when you, right, when you do it there, it's, Julie, that we did a letter.
It doesn't change the date.
The date on the check, exactly, on the orig, original. So, on the June 27th meeting, we will take care of those at that time.
If they're still, yeah.
Yeah, which they, those ones will be, yeah. Cause yeah, those were all taken care of once already, reissued to, to the people that responded to the letters that were sent.
Strike two.
Yeah, so.
Um, I see, uh, we're making payments to Art Anken.
Mm-hmm.
Pete, um, are you, uh, I assume you're keeping track of how much we're paying?
Yes.
Where that will.
Yep, there, there's separate line items for the new project, the ATRAC project, and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's carbon note, different software, in, in the software, different line item.
I did a 23 year for the FY23, in the fifth set of numbers on the accounting software, which I know you guys don't care about, but that's how we're tracking it, so. So that way we know all costs associated with this project.
Gotcha.
By running a report for that number.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
And then, um, maybe it'll be talked about later, but the mentoring academy that we sent Pete to, could you talk a little bit about that?
It'll be in my report.
Okay.
Yep.
Got it.
Okay. Do we need to remove any, I can't, so are we removing any of these?
The one contract for, so the only contract we have is for James Baker.
Agreement for Crystal Travis is gonna be isolated until C.
C, the whole thing, or just hers?
Just her portion. So J, the one for the LMD will stay.
Okay, alright, sounds good. So I need a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Crystal's contract.
So move.
A second.
Move by show, by sign by fold to approve that consent agenda with that removal. Any other discussion? Hearing none, no favor of staff. Alright, both same sign, motion carried.
Alright, we'll move to information discussion, staff reports. I'll start with the high school principal report.
Hello, everyone. Um, you know, it's crazy how last, busy the last month has been. Um, I think since the last time we met, it was your graduation after, right? Cause we went through your graduation, I think.
Yeah, since we met.
Yep, had the last day of school. Um, I think that final week went pretty well. Um, finished up track, finished up golf, uh, and now we're kind of trying to just put the bows on the last couple pieces. Try to still finalize the six through 12 schedule. That's kind of the last, uh, piece for me, and then I'll have my, I guess, duties so far done. Um, I did not get these sent in, but I printed off a copy for these. Just, this is the, any handbook changes I'm making for this year, or looking to make this year, hopefully. And, um, you know, Todd, I could give them to you tonight, and you guys can think on them, and then we can discuss. I will say there's one handbook change that I haven't put forth yet, and that's because the state during the legislative part, they, they passed a really simple bill, but it has big, um, possible consequences for us in terms of, the Board of Regents really wants dual-credit classes. All dual-credit classes that are semester-long, you're worth one full high school credit. So essentially, if you took a semester of speech, it would be worth the same as taking an entire year of, say, English 10, in terms of the number of credits earned and stuff like that. Um, that was not received well by the schools, and so now they're trying to, um, figure out some sort of common ground compromise. Uh, and I was able to talk my way onto the committee that's going to meet in about a week and a half to decide where that's gonna fall. So based off where that's gonna fall, uh, the last handbook change I was looking to make was the idea of starting to phase out our current weighted, um, class system in, in favor of the honors and high honors when we graduate, um, in terms of how we classify who is valid or salutatorian, and, and what we have during graduation, so on and so forth. So, kind of waiting until we see what happens in a week and a half, and then I will email that one out to you, see how, as much time as possible. Um, but in terms of what numbers I put down for what would be considered high honors and honors, it's gonna depend on whether or not those dual credits are worth one or .5 like they currently are. So there's a little bit out there to do. I was very thankful that Dr. Graves let me be on there. I feel like I've got a compromise that might work, that I'm gonna propose, that we've discussed, so we'll see what happens. But that will, that will have some, I worry that if it goes, there'll be some unintended consequences that could hurt us at the high school level. I think that the Board of Regents has to kind of see our side of it. I'm hoping that meeting goes well. So I'll let you know what happens there, but that's, that's on the horizon. Um, couple activities, do have some stuff going on in the summer. I know that both, by the time we meet in July, FCCLA will have headed to Denver for their national convention. I think Hosa goes to Dallas.
Next week?
Next week, is that next week already? Yeah, so, so there's a couple of those coming up pretty soon. But, um, like I said, other than that, um, it was kind of a busy, fast and furious last month, but, uh, everything went out, went off without a hitch. I thought graduation went great. Um, we will, uh, tinker with a couple things. Um, I don't know if it's, I never saw it in writing, but there'd been kind of the understood policy that when that when we flock in for graduation, that the first ten or whatever, is anybody that three point two comes in and we're going to end that next year. I don't, I don't, we're going to, like, valedictorian and studitorium will walk in everybody. Else will be in alphabetical order. I think that is a very common practice policy that I think we need to go with. So I thought I would let you guys know a little ahead of time. I'll let the seniors know on the very first day of school that just so that way there's not anybody getting there. With this group, I think I kind of found out about it late. I didn't want to change it, I mean, in the eleventh hour on them, but that's a policy I was going to go forward with. So if anybody's got any questions about that. Other than that, I think graduation will, we're gonna change a couple of things around the order. Me and Mr. McInnes talked about how we want the giving of the diplomas to be at the end instead of towards the beginning and some of that stuff. So, any questions for me?
Scheduling. So are, do you feel that you're in a better position for this next year for kids to be able to take more electives?
That was the goal, that's why, like, you know, we talked about, and I guess I should probably go through these, not that I handed these out to you, I kind of talked about a couple of things. But, you know, the one goal was is opening up that extra block is to fill the electives, to the point where, you know, it's kind of funny when you saw these kids registering during the end of the year, they were, especially the freshmen are working hard to make sure that they had seven, right? Like, to make sure that they had the ones offered. So I do think so. And like I said, I think as you get older, it's gonna open up opportunities to take an extra dual credit. Definitely start, we got a lot more kids interested in that internship, which is the kind of where we're starting to go there. So not only just more electives, I think, like, those capstone experiences and dual credits, we'll have more opportunities for all. And I think there'll even be some that maybe will open up for like a two-block internship, you know, like if they've got to travel, let's say they're interested in something that's at Mitchell or maybe can get two blocks opened up together, we'll open up a little bit bigger one. These handbook changes, everything that's on the first page, I talked about a couple of school board meetings ago. That's not the first time you've seen that stuff. That's the idea of the schedule change that takes SRV out of a block and puts it every single day. Then we talked about with that, everybody now has to sign up for seven instead of six because there's now eight and so you can only have one study hall. And then handbook change number two is the idea of since they are offered that more, we're going to twenty-four graduation credits. And I included those. So you've seen that first page before, I discussed that. The next one, I did a lot of research over the last month and made some adjustments to the attendance policy. Some of this, if you look at our current attendance policy, it's basically saying the same thing. But there are some things, like there was two different spots where we talked about a number of absences that would start to be a loss of credit. And I think it was a little bit confusing with like total absences versus unexcused absences. And so I kind of cleaned that up with the, essentially what it comes down to is when somebody has eight absences, there will be a meeting with me and then the ideal will be is anything from eight on, they have to make up. And if they get to ten, they would have to make up the time outside of the class time. And if they get to ten, that's when they would lose credit. There was never just that statement that said at ten absences. You know, it said something along the lines of, once you get to, I think, twelve or something like that, it can be considered. And I think that was written before there was block scheduling a little bit. I think twelve is way too many. So I kind of went with what I had found was common with other schools that have block scheduling and kind of went with that. I wrote in some other things, like you'll notice that, talked about exact absences. I know Jill, me and you had talked about as these kids start to visit colleges, what I included in there for every senior would be allowed two college visits that would be exempt from your absence count. Those would not count towards your ten absences. And a junior gets one. And so like in your junior year, in senior year, you could visit three different colleges and not have it count against your absences. Along with that, so you'll see that second page just kind of lays out what is considered exempt versus excused versus unexcused. Another thing I put in here that you can do and wasn't really written in before is the idea that, you know, I get to choose if something is excused or unexcused, even if a parent were to call in. Now, for example, somebody calls in and says junior slept in and is gonna be fifteen minutes late. That is not an excused tardy, in my opinion. That is an unexcused tardy. You have no reason for having been late and so I can mark it as unexcused and it can go against their total. So I just put in there, you know, that the Parks and School District reserves the right to determine when an absence or tardy shall be excused or not. And so that's just a little wording that would help me out a little bit. So if you ever have any questions with this, kind of let me know. The rest of it kind of lays out, you know, what to do. I might go through there and kind of bolt some stuff so that it reads a little better. But it's, like I said, a lot of it was kind of already there. I just kind of cleaned it up and made it a little bit clearer. Any questions?
Point clarification, and these are always, we go through these twice, so we'll use in the June meeting, then July meeting, so that you have them in front of you, you have an opportunity and they will come back again in July. If you find something in there that you question or, you can always, we talked about it in July as well if we need to make adjustments in that respect, you can do that. So the other clarification I would let you know is, and as long as this gets out there, which it's going to, there is no distinction. A parent cannot excuse their kid from school, period. A parent calling in and saying, "My kid's not coming today," is not acceptable. What's that mean? That means according to codified law, that because of truancy and because of attendance compliance in the state of South Dakota, excused means you call, you know where my kid's at. Unexcused means nobody calls, we don't know where your kid is at. There is no such thing as an excused absence, per se. That it means that it doesn't count against them. If they're absent, they're absent. If you call in as a parent and you let us know what the situation is, still absent, but now we know, it's accounted for. Unexcused, we don't know where they're at, nobody said anything. Nobody's called, which is common. So I, the many years of doing this, parents, "I can do anything I want with my kid." No, you can't. Excused absences means accountability. That's the only thing that that means. So back to your point, Mr. Knippling, that you're gonna decide on some of that stuff. I mean, well within the right to be able to apply based on whatever situation that is.
Duke, can I touch on that at the end of the first one? I found this on somebody else's tense policy, I kind of wrote it. So you look at the end of the first paragraph, it says, "South Dakota state statutes require the local board of education to enforce definite standards of attendance with few valid excuses for absences." So that putting that in there is kind of referring to the fact that we are bound by law to be the one that decides what is okay and what's not due to truancy and stuff like that. So anyway, like I said, if you find some stuff, you can shoot me an email too ahead of time and I can make those judgments, adjustments ahead so that way when it comes July, it's ready to roll. And like I said, I'll, as soon as I get that last piece after this meeting in a week and a half, I will send that out to you with plenty of time so you can look at that. Honors, high honors, because that's a big change when you're going away from weighted class system. But the reason why I do that, me as a principal, I need a teacher, any student, none of us are even understanding what makes one, two, three, four, or five in terms of what the weight level is. So it's like if nobody understands it, is it really a system that we should be using to rank our classes? And I'm not gonna change it on the, I think what I would do is with the next couple of years, I would, I would still give the kids honors or high honors, but that's not gonna be how I determine class rank. It'll be the ones that are incoming as freshmen. But that'll be when it comes into effect in terms of determining who is a valedictorian or studitorium, et cetera, et cetera.
So will the students that have a certain GPA or above still be recognized in some way at graduation with a cord or what?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That would be the idea, is, I mean, it could almost make it kind of neater because like a high honors versus honors versus a standard grad, it'll be noted in the thing, they have cords as well.
Sure.
So that'll be good to go.
Okay. And I have one more question. Oh, I was just curious, so since these are changes, will there be a way that you're drawing attention to them or making sure people understand that it's different or it's gonna be? I mean, I would be really honest, I don't feel like this has been, what's the right word? I don't feel like, the way that you have explained it, it's the way it's been.
I'm not sure what you're saying.
I'm just saying, I don't know that it's being enforced this way.
What way?
That people are...
The old way?
Yeah. Okay. So I'm just saying that will be...
You're talking about the attendance policy?
Yes, I'm saying that will be a change for people because it hasn't been enforced. And so you just, I just want to make sure it gets attention drawn to it so that people understand that.
So in orientation, the students come in and that's what you do. You go over that with those kids in depth, any changes you make to that handbook, so.
Sure.
It's kind of gone through, like, after we had talked, as they did registration, I told them about what is, we're hopefully planning on having be. So they, they've been communicated, every student has heard the spiel about what this part is and the attendance part is not. And so that would definitely be like that very first meeting of the year and probably then again on the first day of school. Talk about it two different times, getting them to understand, the understandings and the expectations of attendance and what is and is not okay. And we started that, you know, we adjusted some of them, like, for example, the idea of three tardies gets you detention kind of deal. Like, they've had a whole year under their belt of understanding that rule. But now this, in terms of the number of absences, I think that's the part that would be new and need to be communicated and we'll do our best to also not only communicate to the kids, but to the parents, the expectations, what we gotta do.
I was gonna say, that's probably where your questions are gonna come from.
A hundred percent.
The parents are the ones that are gonna be like, what is this? This is not the way it's been.
You know, and we'll have to, we'll push it out a couple of different ways. You know, you can't always trust that something you send home in paper gets home to the kiddos. So that's the beauty of, you know, both campus messenger and Thrill Show, they can both get out there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
All right, we will move to Adam.
Hey, everyone. Start with elementary. I got the year wrapped up. It was a good finish, I think, to a good school year. And kind of hit the ground running with our summer stuff. We have a hundred and two kids signed up for our summer reading program. So it was kind of fun that first day, it felt like everybody was back again that first Tuesday of the reading program, so that was fun. So we have four teachers and several pairs helping out with that here in town. And then we have two teachers out at the colony as well, we're offering out there. So counting colony kids, I think we're over probably a hundred and thirty-ish kids. So it's been really successful. Otherwise, other than that, just kind of wrapping things up, getting things ordered for the next school year. Have already had six new students coming in, so I'm excited about that. We have, that I know of, three new fourth graders along with a couple new kindergarteners and be kindergartner. So that's positive and preschool numbers are filling up. And so I think our numbers in the elementary level look really positive. So, yeah, things have been going good with that. As far as activities, you know, we just wrapped up state golf tournament. It's fun that our whole team qualified for state out there. It's fun to have the full team out there. So that was good, they had a great experience out in Rapid. Wrapped up state track, they had a great showing. I feel like we had a really successful state track, state track meet. Kids did really well there and now again hitting the ground running with summer stuff. And kids are in here lifting and working out and, you know, just right to work. So it's been really positive as far as all of those things getting underway and busy time for everyone, but it's good. So coaches are in here helping out with everything. Speaking of that, I believe we have all of our coaching positions filled, which is a pretty good spot to be in. When you're talking to other schools, they're, not everybody's in that position. So feel fortunate to be in a good spot there. You know, have people in place and good quality people. So excited about that and what that will bring for our upcoming year. Been working on, we rolled out, had a meeting end of May about trying to get the scoreboard, the video board rolling and trying to upgrade one of our existing boards with that. And so been working on sponsorships for that. Right now, we have one top-tier business committed and then we have two of our second-level sponsors committed. I'm waiting to hear back from a few more people, hopefully this week. They have meetings within their businesses that they're gonna get back to me. So making progress on that. I'm hoping here to wrap that up and kind of see where we're at here in the next week and a half. You know, it's just kind of, to get ahold of people, you know, you stop in, you drop stuff off, you email, you text, it's, you know, getting that answer. And, but I think people have been open to it. Whether or not we're gonna get to that number that we need to get to, I don't know, time will tell here in the next week and a half or so. But, you know, I think even people that have said no to it, they like the idea, it just maybe was a little too much financially for them to commit to. So working on that and keep you updated on how that ends up turning out, so. I think that's what I have. I saw his handbook laid, do you want me to touch on handbook now since I'm up here? Do you want to go later?
It's actually a discussion on the low below.
Yeah, so let's wait for that then. Okay, sounds good. Okay, anything else? Okay, thanks, guys.
Mr. McInnes?
Just an update on the HVAC project. As you'll find out when we go through this project with the new building project and this project slated for the end of the summer, just a little bit of a snag. I've been working with Mr. Paulson, Josh Paulson, and Damon DeWitt on, I guess for lack of better terms, an oversight. There's gonna be some panels that are going to have to be switched out. At last count, there was gonna be four of those and it had to do with every unit cabinet heater basically specked in the specs. I knew we ordered as four hundred and eighty volts and all the panels on the inside are two forty. So those are gonna have to be refitted, retrofitted in order to handle the load that all the cabinet heaters are going to be required. So I suspect you can read the, between the lines as to where that's gonna lead us. Now, I did make it very clear that this project is being funded with our SR three dollars and, you know, there isn't like, there's an extra pot of money at the end of the rainbow for this oversight. So I will continue to have those conversations. I do not have any numbers as of yet. I did talk with the Moof onsite supervisor with electric. I have known him for several years and, yeah.
It was spectra or it was order drum?
Spectra.
Ouch.
Ordered correctly.
Ordered?
Ordered what was on the...
Right, right.
So anyway, that's just an update on that, but another lot, the progress is going. We're out without air. As we sit, I have communicated the desire for that to get fixed. Hopefully made by the end of the week, that they'll have this particular unit that supplies the elementary office up and going. The high school end is progressing, I would say relatively nicely. They got everything demoed in a very short period of time and all the stuff's going back in at the high school level. So, and they are now tearing into the armory. They've gotten the first, I would say, portions of the L-shaped blue ductwork down and they're going to start putting the chillers, or excuse me, the coils that sit on the front of those units inside the building. So they had to remove that stuff so they could get up there and put those in there. So last time I talked to Josh, which was last week, that that would be done, hopefully here by the end of the week, that they'll have those components in place. And then the rest of the ductwork will come down relatively easy from that point, so. Department of Ed update, John, you asked about the Pre-Prior Professional Teacher Pathway Program.
We just go back to stuff.
Yep.
So the equipment that we don't have that we need, do you think there's an issue on getting it here?
I asked.
Okay, and?
And I didn't get...
A good answer?
A good answer. Because they don't know for a hundred percent sure.
Sure.
As far as, now, because of just the panels and what they were asking, he said that's all the materials that they had on hand, it was just the panel in itself. He didn't seem like he was gravely concerned to like, this isn't gonna happen. He was like, I don't know, I can't give you a hundred percent answer as to what the timeline is, he said, but it will be okay, he said, so we'll see. So, we'll see. So, but I asked that question.
Okay.
Cause I had the same thought. Anything else on the HVAC?
So, will it, in the end, be more money?
If you ask me. Well, we'll see what that path leads us down. So, somebody's paying for it.
Okay.
The question is, who?
Right, because they figured they're wrong. So, okay, I just wanted to make sure that I was understanding.
I've been down this road more than once, and comment always comes back, well, you would've had, you would've needed it anyway.
Right, but we didn't approve that amount of money?
Yeah, well, yeah.
That they already started the project?
So, I think we'll be okay, honestly.
Okay.
The DOE, paraprofessional teacher pathway program, we had four that did apply. And remember that conversation that we had a month ago, that if there was some, nobody has been selected yet. But potential on our part as a school district, for those that wanna pursue and advance that degree and speed up that pipeline for them to become certified teachers, is that they have to have skin in the game, which is a thousand dollars from that particular individual, then the school district has to have skin in the game, up to a thousand dollars. Now, that's a thousand dollars per year typically, two-year program. Some of them may be done in a year, just kinda depends on what credits they have already to submit towards the program. So, you know, I do not have any idea, I just had to fill out some information for the ones, the four DOE asked me for, and sent it back to them. So, that's, at this stage, that's all I've heard at this point in time. So, something to consider, you know, do, I believe we'll get all four, only knowing that there's 60 slots there. No, I don't think so, cause I think it was a pretty popular program.
I was gonna ask you.
Yeah. So, I think we jump through that hoop then, and we'll address that when that comes to be. If we have any of those paraprofessionals that are chosen to participate, then, you know, we can further that conversation as about how much it could cost a school district. So, you know, the rest of that stuff, I would jump down to my switching custodial companies. Craig and I felt it was, you know, prudent on our part, just to let you know, we've had a presentation from J C L out of Sioux Falls, and Craig's taken quite a bit of time and sat down doing all the cost comparatives on that and on our day-to-day products and things that we order in bulk and stuff. And I think without going through everything, and he didn't quite get through everything, but, I'm not speaking for him, but we've already identified about $10,000 where we can cut costs.
This is the second company that I've done it with. We got a quote from another one where there was winners and losers on both sides. So, some of the products would cost a little bit more, some of the products would cost just less. This one so far, I hadn't found, when I went through it, I did not find a loser in the 10 to 15 products that we use most frequently, like garbage bags, like paper towels, like pan soap and those things. And this one will also, has the ability to get us our cleaning supplies that we need in the kitchen where the other one didn't, that I compared with, too. So, that's a bonus as well, where you don't have to have two different companies doing that, instead of someone providing the kitchen soft, or cleaning stuff, and then you're the regular everyday cleaning things as well. But I did not find one loser of the 10 to 15 products that I compared that were our, because I can do a 12-month comparison of what we've ordered in the last 12 months. And I took the big-ticket items, cause those are the ones that were gonna save us the money. Not saying every item is that way, but out of the big-ticket items, that's why the dollar amount got to where it was, because of the quantity that we were ordering.
We just wanted to make sure, inform you that this is something that we feel is a step in the right direction, especially, you know, when we come back to you and tell you we're saving the better part of five figures on some of this stuff. So, we're trying to be prudent. So, so that's really all I have. If you had any questions about the other components, I had in my information, but you could read through that, that was just more information. So, if we can move on.
Okay, was the mentor, do you have a part of that?
We just talked about that.
That was the pathways thing?
Teacher pathway program. That's different than what we referenced.
Oh, the mentoring program that I was talking about is different than that, right?
You're talking about student-teacher pay?
No, I was talking about John's question of the bills that we paid for all the student-teacher...
Six P, six P.
That academy that they went to, is that the same as this South Dakota pathway program?
Oh, no.
See, I think he was asking about the mentoring program. All the expenditures that we had, all those will be reimbursed.
Oh, yeah, the state.
That was a, it's a grant through the state.
Yes.
We pay them, they turn around, and we seek reimbursement for those. So, those stipends and stuff for this, is that what you're questioning, correct?
Uh, I misunderstood.
Yeah. And those are all, that's all just a grant through the state. It's nothing, it's an in and out for us. We had to pay them first, turn around and seek reimbursement on June 8th through the state, and then we'll send us a check by June 3rd.
And so, they're gonna be mentoring teachers here, or?
They have been.
They have been.
So, our veterans mentoring our rookies, and they stayed with in-house. Typically, if you can't find those positions, they'll assign somebody from across the state, they'll find somebody in a like position to come and help those people, those first-year people, you know. But we had pretty good connections here, we had valuable staff, and the staff that we had in those like positions said absolutely. So, it's a two-year program, but yeah...
This is the most we've had. You might not have noticed in the past, last year we only had two.
Two.
We do have one that's mentoring somebody in another district, but only one.
So, that's a continuing...
Two-year deal.
Yeah.
And what after the two years then?
Then after the two-years program, so as the state goes, then after two years at that rookie teacher, first-year, second-year teacher, then once the state has been removed from that, and then there is no continuing program that takes that to the next step further, other than what they've already fostered and established in that relationship with that particular veteran teacher in that two-year span of time. And that's where even if it goes out of the district, then they always have that resource to go back to. Now, you always have resource in the people in-house, too, but there's always that another layer. But we do not have anything formally after that two-year process here in Parkston to make sure, other than, that's where your principals come in and support those teachers in their teaching practices through walkthroughs, evaluations, things like that. So, is that a answer? I misunderstood you, John, I'm sorry about the mentoring program.
Yeah. Well, it was both the money and what it was doing.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're held harmless financially.
And they have two academies, a kickoff one and a after-the-year one.
Yeah.
So, there'll be another summer kickoff one in August, and then another end-of-the-year one in June next year, where they all get together in Sioux Falls, and that's what we, what you saw. Hotels and travel and, or like meals, I think it was one meal, but all of that money, even a substitute for an out-of-district placement, or a mentor, if the one that had to go to another school, they pay for the substitutes they wanted. So...
Okay. Anything else, any other questions? We'll move to discussion items. Discussion item A is to review policy manual. The following A S B S E policies are being presented for review in a first reading, B F C, B F C A, B F F, B H double A, B H D, which were all included in the packet for your review. Anybody have questions about any of those?
So, you have board regulations in your handbooks, we're going through right now, suspension of policies and regulations. That just gives you the authority as a board to suspend any policy that you see fit. Board member education, and then board member compensation, those are the policies that are, you know, for the first time. So, nothing that you are not currently practicing right now.
Any questions? All right. We'll move to B, which is review policy manual. The following A S B S E policies are being presented for review in a second reading, B D D D, B D D E, B D D F, B D D G, B D D H. And those were in last month's package. Does anybody have questions or concerns about any of those? All right, we'll do C is review policy manual. The following A S B S E policies are being presented for review and adoption, B D D, B D C, B D D A, B D D B, B D D C. And if there are no questions or concerns, we'll need a motion to approve those policies. This is the third reading.
Move violation, second by Turner, any other discussion? If you're none, I'll favor say aye. All same sign, marching clear.
All right, D is building project. The school board will hear an update on the project and discuss possible change orders for the proposed remodel of the current weight room to the new training room changing area, ADA access at the high school office entry, and H back to high school office space.
So, there's, I don't know if anybody can see this. So, this is a rendition of the entryway going into the high school office. So, that's the current east entryway, and the conversation is centered around, if you see in front of those two windows, which don't exist but will be cut in, you'll see a handrail. So, there's the ADA ramp. So, in the initial specs, the whole stoop that sits out there right now in front of that east wing was determined to be demolished and gotten rid of, and have to be reformed and start all over, along with, in conjunction with an ADA compliant ramp. I just started asking some questions as to the reasons and the rationale as to why we had to get rid of something that was in perfectly good condition. And never really, I guess, nobody questioned that, I guess, nobody saw any huge issues with putting an ADA compliant ramp while leaving the stoop there and connecting it. So, this rendition over here essentially comes down the side of the building over here, that's why you'll see those handrails, and then it just is an L shape, okay, and it goes back to, actually goes like this, it actually goes back to the sidewalk then. It was initially, as I stand, on the right side when you look out the door. Why? Because there is two spots right there that I have an ADA compliant cutout already in the sidewalk. So, if you go out to the left, there's nothing but a grassy knoll there. You can put this L-shaped ramp on either side. My question, or the question that they pose, is anybody in favor of putting a handrail across the windows as it goes down towards the south? You can put it towards the north, impacts no windows whatsoever. So, I thought, well, I have a personal opinion, but I'm not sure that's my place, so I wanted basically to ask you guys. So, essentially, it's pretty simple. You like the handrail going across the windows, or you want the handrail going on the other side, the north side and connecting to the sidewalk?
And there's no cost difference.
No.
The only thing is, it's farther away from the parking spots.
A little bit.
Not much.
Not much.
When you come down the end of the ramp, not much.
Not much.
Whose office is that?
That's Mr. Knipling.
We better, we better not do that then.
Part of his, but it's part of Peg's office, too.
Oh, yeah, then we definitely don't want to do it.
Well, I think it looks ridiculous.
Yeah, it does.
Without any cost, I would say.
Yeah, it costs nothing. And not to mention the fact that I convinced them to keep the stoop that's already there, instead of jackhammering the whole thing out and starting over. So, we're gonna glean some...
Maybe, I said, maybe a little savings.
We're gonna glean, well, we're gonna glean more than a little savings out of that deal.
I saw in one of the drawings, there already was an L-shaped, excuse me, to the north, but maybe not.
Well, originally, when we had that conversation, and then some construction meetings that I've had, then we went out there and looked at it, and we went that way with it, only because it was closer to those handicap accessible spots that are already cut out in the sidewalk.
Sure.
And then they came up with this, and then came up with a drawing, the rendition of the handrail across the windows.
And didn't they say, Mr. M., that the distance between our current gymnasium to those handicap spots is actually farther than what this new one would be?
So, you'd be closer to come in this way into the office, it's still closer than if you get out in those spots and it'll go to the current armory. So, you're not really putting anybody at a distance.
Yeah.
But I think aesthetically, it's probably something more appealing. Everybody, you okay with that? Agree with that?
Yes.
Okay. The other component, and I could show you if you needed to, but in the current weight room, the plan there is in the third phase of the project, which is gonna be towards a year from now, when school is out, they have to retrofit that, what is currently the weight room. That'll become your training room, remember, there's some changing rooms in there, and that's where we're gonna put, you know, we had a couple bathrooms that we put in there, at least one stall, a shower, and a toilet and stuff like that. But the bigger question there, and this was brought up by Pitt's Construction, is there is a, it's lined, both of those training rooms, or not training rooms, those changing rooms that are in there are lined with lockers, and that's fine, we talked about that. But it's, they put them on a stoop, and the stoop is a concrete stoop. So, and it sits probably 18 inches, if I remember right. So, can you imagine, it's one, a stoop like this, it's flat, lockers sit up, and then there's another portion that comes out this way that acts as a bench, and it's concave, and then it just goes down to the ground.
All cement.
But it's, the whole thing is cement. It lines the whole walls of those changing rooms. So, the conversation there, when I looked at it in the construction meeting and I showed Craig, it's like, and Pitts brought it to my attention, like, is there a necessity for this? Is that overkill? Is that the way we want it? Because that is also something that, while it's a change order, we could glean money back on that, because what's gonna have to be done in there to construct the form and the concrete that's involved in order to put your lockers on and then have that bench component, you know, that kids can sit on. When Craig and I talked, we had envisioned...
A bench like we have now.
A locker and a bench.
A wooden, or some sort of bench that could be even movable.
With some pedestals that you could move around, I mean, if you had to. So, we didn't probably look at that to the nth degree, but it's already specked that way, it's in there, it's part of your 6.35 million that it's gonna cost you. But is that something that you wanna leave as is and continue to pursue? The reason why I ask is because I have yet to get final numbers on the change order for the office, the teacher workroom space that we converted, the room next door, which included knocking out a wall, putting in a bathroom in that space, and then putting in all-new cabinetry where you put a kitchenette in there for teachers' workspace, or lunch and things like that. So, but I think I told you last month that those numbers are headed north. And if there's a way that we can capture some money, one, by the, this particular option, maybe not putting concrete in those changing rooms and capturing money out of not tearing off the stoop and having to start all over, that maybe we can help offset some of the costs of that teacher's workroom. So, I am, I'm, I, right now, my conversations that I've had with Pitt's Construction and Arc Inc., the numbers that they do have, they don't have all of them yet, they're waiting for an HVAC number on that concept. We're probably looking at 100,000.
We have like 300 and some?
Your contingency was 350.
I don't remember any detail like that, do you, in the, I mean, in that locker room? In any of the building, I mean, we never really got down to that level of detail.
Exactly right, as a building committee man, we never...
Well, I mean, I don't think that's really our job, but I would say to tell Pitts, if you find any of these things like this, to, they are, at least let us know.
Yep, and they're, they're coming to me and say, hey.
I want it to look nice, but it certainly doesn't have to be like that.
Absolutely.
And that's the man.
Fancy.
Bench is never movable.
Yeah, that's not, doesn't seem smart, I agree.
You would never, ever be, well, I wouldn't say never, ever, depending on what you could think of, but, you know, when it becomes permanent, I mean, what else if you wanted to do something different than those particular rooms?
You wouldn't be able to.
Yeah. I mean, how would you do that to make a deal?
Break it out.
When I asked Craig, and he kinda looked at me like, like you did, I was sitting on those meetings, and I don't ever remember that being part of the conversation. So, I asked Arc Inc., and I said, where, what, I said, did I miss something here? Did I, what didn't I remember hearing about how that ended up? Standard protocol in how they design their locker rooms, that they do in all of their school projects, that is their way of designing that locker space and that bench space. It's just something that they do. People love it. I'm, I'm not gonna argue the fact whether you love it or hate it, that's not the issue, you know, but he said, wait, sir, it's up to you guys, you don't have to pursue that.
Cause we don't envision that being one of our permanent usage of locker rooms for Arc.
It's for visitors. And that was the way it was originally designed, was for junior high kids or some fifth and sixth graders to come in and put their stuff and go play next door.
Yeah.
Or officials.
Yep.
Yeah. So, I, I just wanted to bring those two components to your attention, and I'm, they're waiting for me to give them feedback on those two topics, so...
So, you feel like you have a good answer? From us?
I know they're the answer on the handrail, and I'm reading faces and nobody, we're not doing that.
Yeah.
But I, I suspect the changing room, if we, we don't have to go to that far to put a cement stoop in there. We'll build a, they'll build a base, they'll replace that, the base, they'll set the lockers on. I mean, just like throughout our entire footprint, that's what's in our locker rooms now, that's what in our hallways. You know, so it's an opportunity again to do some cost savings in the project. And I don't think it lessens aesthetically, I don't think it cheapens it up, I don't think it looks tacky by any stretch. I mean, cause that's, we didn't have that vision in the first place.
Right.
So.
So are they keeping track of like things that get taken away and added? And are they keeping track of that too, so we kinda know where we're at?
Yeah.
They'll get the numbers, yeah.
And anytime that you have a change order, all that stuff has to go through an RFI and an RFP, and it goes to the architect, then it gets dispersed to all the vendors. All the vendors have to give their feedback and their input. If it's a change order that's gonna cost money, that has to associate to what it's gonna cost now. And then these deducts, they just keep track of the deducts.
Okay.
You know, and they'll have to ask them the same thing. They'll go through, okay, this isn't part of the project more, how much are you gonna deduct from that project? So, yeah.
That's good.
Yeah, there's a paper trail for it.
Good. Okay, anything else on that? Do you have anything else you wanna?
No, that's, I just-
Okay.
How's the dirt work coming?
Good. Yep, actually, that's all new fill coming in there and stuff. And GeoTech, I asked on Thursday, they've been here three times for sure. And so far, everything has been good.
No artesian wells.
Um, not yet.
No buried, no buried gas tanks.
They did find a storm sewer that was on the print in a different spot that they unearthed, but it's not a big deal because it was on the print, they're just gonna reroute it and make it capture to where the print said it was going to. So, yeah, they started digging, and next thing you know, they saw, you know, eight-inch PVC there and they're like, I'm not sure that belongs there, but yeah, it belongs there, cause it's there. But they got it handled already, so, yeah. But other than that, menopause is doing well, like I said, all that's new fill coming in, so they're progressing nicely. I suspect, I was hoping, I was told that maybe by the end of this week, but I know how all those, that world works, that footings are gonna be, Archer's gonna come and start forming the footings here. If not this week, then next, so, as long as it don't rain. So that, they sat for half a day on this, yeah, so.
Okay. Good. All right, thank you. Okay, so we'll move to E, discussion item E is student-teacher pay. The school board will discuss the expectations and pay of student-teachers and student-teachers as quote-unquote "teacher of record."
We talked about this in May and we wanted a little more research on that. Two designations there, the student-teacher permit versus the advanced student-teacher permit. So it'd be, I mean, just doing some digging and asking around and, you know, what I put in your pocket is a creation of something that I gleaned from little this, little pieces from everybody, but essentially just wordsmithed that, and that's what I came up with as far as payment of student-teacher and advanced student-teacher. So the student-teacher permit, I think your guys' directive lasts, you know, in May, you know, let's say we have to call a Wesleyan, call them, just say, hey, we got a couple people that want a student-teacher, one person, will you take them? You know, the notion there, that first heading that is bolded. Student-teacher permit is worded to an individual's under the direct supervision of assigned cooperating teacher. Student-teacher permit is limited to candidates who have met the requirements of the regionally accredited educator preparation program. So if you jump down to student-teacher pay, Parkston School District encourages the acceptance and allowance of college students to experience the teaching profession via student-teacher experience is required of them for state certification purposes. The district will not require candidates to secure the permit offered by the DOE. Therefore, the district at this time will not consider compensating student-teachers that are routinely being placed in the district via post-secondary program requests. The district may consider the necessity of such payment on a case-by-case basis. So I think I captured that unless somebody wants to speak otherwise. Just a regular student-teacher, we didn't, you didn't have the desire to say, yes, we will be paying you for coming in and student-teacher. But I gave you the wiggle room case-by-case basis if you needed it. So the advanced student-teacher permit, Parkston School District utilized candidates who are able to secure an advanced permit only when the district employment options have been thoroughly vetted via the district's routine hiring practices. When no current certified candidate can be ascertained through the hiring process, the district will pay student-teachers who are able and willing to secure an advanced permit. The candidate will be offered a work agreement that stipulates pay that is equal to the district's long-term substitute pay stipend. This pay will be in effect to the point in time when the candidate presents their certificate for full licensure from the Department of Ed. Candidate will not be eligible for any district benefit offerings to include healthcare coverage, dental, vision, sick leave, bereavement leave, until which time they present their certificate documenting their full licensure from the DOE. Candidates utilizing this capacity as an advanced student-teacher, teacher of record will be paid in accordance with the district's negotiated agreement for the base teacher pay at which time they present documentation via their issued teaching certificate to the administration. At which time, the pay will be prorated, utilizing the number of days left in the school year, and the candidate will become eligible for all benefits that the district is able to offer with respect to certain restrictions and timelines expected by third parties administering such benefits. Meaning, sometimes there are situations, we don't have a control, that if it's a benefit, that third-party administrator says, you can't join now, there's only one opportunity to join, it's this time, this time. I mean, we don't have any control over that, so that's what that means. If the advanced student-teacher candidate is then retained for continuing contract status, they will be offered a contract for employment as a second-year teacher on the district's hiring schedule. The district reserves the right to address the necessity of such payment on a case-by-case basis. And I believe that long-term subpay, I heard from two or three different other school districts, and that seems to be a common route that school districts are following. There are some that are going way above and beyond that and, you know, I don't know that some, some are even maybe considering less than that, but, you know, I think it's a, a fair approach to using that person as a teacher of record. So.
And our current, our current long-term subpay is a hundred and fifty-six dollars a day. At six and a half hours, I think it's twenty-four bucks an hour. Is what it comes out to when you're looking at a six and a half hour day. So rather than doing an hourly rate, that's why we went the long-term subpay for a day.
So this is just a discussion item? You're asking us to make a decision tonight on if we agree with that? Or is that something we're gonna talk about in executive session as well?
Well, I mean, it can be a personnel issue. I mean, if you're comfortable with it, you could say yea to it. If you wanna, because we have personnel involved in this situation, if you, you wanna have a conversation about that situation, you have every right to do that. And then, you know, make decisions based on that conversation, if you so choose. So, just because it's on a discussion item, you know, at this stage of the game, it's there, you know, what's that policy procedure, I guess. It's not necessarily even a policy, even though it says policy, because there's nothing in your manual. There's nothing in your manual, there's nothing in Associate School Board's manual. Because until three weeks ago or a month ago, you couldn't do it, it wasn't even a thing. So nobody has true policy on it, so, but yes.
And everybody scrambled to try to come up with something. Because we've, I've gotten asked three times in the last week about the same situation from other business managers too.
We're not the only ones.
Yeah.
So, but if you wanna have a conversation, then circle back to it, you can, that's fine. Yeah.
What are you guys thinking? I'm open to whatever. So you may have questions, thoughts, move it to a second.
Do you have to let the, if we're considering a person or a teacher like that, do you have to let the state Board of Education know? Or, because if they're not, if they're doing the student-teacher, compared to getting a full-time graduated teacher, do you have to let them know that here, we plan on doing this?
Is that part of the PRA form changes right now too?
Well, it comes through what we call, there's a whole accountability system, it's called the Personal Record Form. So it's called PRF, it's on the DOE side. So it's a whole accounting, we have every living, breathing body who has anything to do with the district has to be in that system. And then that's where you declare, you delineate as to what their responsibilities are, or what they're, who they are, what they're teaching, what they get paid. So all that stuff gets accounted for in that system. So that's how they know that you're doing this, so.
Is this person treated just like a brand-new teacher then? They have a mentor and they have?
Yeah, most definitely. So, I've had that conversation, Crystal's here, I've had that conversation with Ms. Travis about what is gonna be expected and how we're gonna proceed to help her be supportive. And Mr. Fisher and I have talked about, you know, what we're going to do as administrators to help her in the situation that we're asking her to, to do as well, so, yeah.
And there's like expectations.
So like the mentoring program you just referenced?
That was she was reporting.
She'll be traveling that path. I told her she didn't have a choice on that.
So there really aren't any, are there requirements for like follow-up and making sure that, from the state? Or do we kinda build that how we would normally?
That's us, that's on us.
They don't really tell us anything?
No, that's on us.
They haven't yet anyway, right?
Well, so far, I mean, but, no, I think-
You'll just treat it like a brand-new teacher?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yep, for sure.
So there's a lot of interest in the school systems doing this? Just because of the lack of teachers?
Hey, well, that's the operative word there, Mr. Pearl. Is there interest? Not really. Do we have to? Yeah. I mean, across the state, like Craig, you said you've been contacted three, three times already. And the chairs that I sit in, I've had more than one conversation, more than three. I mean, so this is the start, Department of Ed's way of trying to give school districts who cannot find viable candidates, if they have these types of situations, that they can put them in those seats and allow them to do that in lieu of. So they're student-teacher, they're going through that practice, they are being supported in that practice by administrator, they still have cooperating teacher that'll support them. But ultimately, they become that teacher of record. So responsibility for the students' learning, while you're, you're flying it, while you're, you're building it, while you're flying it, is still on that particular individual. And you, as a school district, have to acknowledge the fact that, and we will have to put that in a statement to the people in the colony. We will have to let them know that technically, because we are Title I school, targeted-assisted and hold Ellen, that they're being taught, their children are being taught by somebody who is not highly qualified nor certified. So it's nothing more than a declarative statement that we push out in a letter. That's our obligation to do that. So, and we will. So the question that I've had is, say yea to the, what you see in front of you, or if you wanna have further conversations, because it does involve some personnel issues. You could go in and wait executive session, have a conversation, and then circle back to this decision once you come out of there, if that's what you so choose to do.
So is that the situation? What's the difference? I'm not, I don't understand the difference between the two.
I'm not sure what you're asking me.
Well, they're in two different minds.
Yes, student-teacher permit and advanced student-teacher permit.
What's the difference?
It's the expectation that if you're gonna go advanced, then they become that teacher of record.
Cause you don't have another teacher hired sitting in that room with them. Like last year, we had two student teachers at the high school.
I thought it was like two different levels of like the same, I'm sorry.
FCC LA, so our fax teacher was in the room with that.
Sure.
So they would be the student-teacher permit situation.
And they don't even have to get the permit. These are options that school districts have in order to help. The part of that is, is if you're trying to build a pool of candidates or you know that you have positions to fill, then you may wanna get those student-teachers on board. And you can do that by, hey, if you wanna student teach for us, we'll give you a little money on top of it. And it goes back to Omaha Public School Systems coming up to the campus of University of South Dakota, knocking on doors and saying-
So this was the situation we talked about last month?
Both of them are.
Okay.
Yep. And that's why I came back with this.
Yeah. The student-teacher permit's kinda like the old traditional student-teacher.
Yeah, okay.
And we're, the way this is written, and we're not paying them.
You're not paying them, no.
It's the advanced student-teacher permit, when there's no one else in the room.
Okay.
Does that help?
Yes, it does, I, yeah, I thought it was too different. Thinking of a different thing.
That information is how Department of Ed is delineating between the two. Information. Okay? So I understand you wanna have some conversation because it involves personnel.
Yeah, I think we will.
All right. So you can move on.
Okay.
See a letter out for answers.
Okay, we will move to letter F. Handbook changes, the school board will discuss the proposed changes being recommended for the six through twelve in elementary, along with a first look at the proposed athletic handbook.
I think you guys have a copy of my elementary ones. I don't have too much, you've been working on it for a couple years now. But there are two things that I wanted to add to our elementary handbook. One is a lice policy. This is what we have been pretty much operating with anyways, but it wasn't in our handbook. And so I'd like to make it a part of our handbook moving forward, just to have in there to, you know, parents have questions on. The big thing is some form of accountability with students that have lice, not just taking, going home for a day, saying they come back, shampooed their hair, and that we're good to go. So some form of accountability, whether that's our school nurse or going out to the clinic, but some form of accountability to check on that. So that's what that addition is. And then in looking through some other handbooks, I saw this elastic cause, and just wanted to put this in there as well. I feel like this is a good one just to have in there, that if situations arise, you know, that we don't have specifically covered, administration will work together to do what is fair and act quickly in the best interest of the students. So those are my two ones for the elementary handbook. Any questions on any of those? And then with the athletic handbook, that's something that's brand-new. We haven't had anything in place here with that. And so something I've talked with coaches and other ADs about, I've looked at other schools' handbooks, you know, I talked with fellow ADs about things that they have used. And so this is kinda what I pieced together. The biggest thing is just, again, to have that accountability when situations come up that we can refer back to, that kinda help guide us through different situations, so we have that consistency. We have kinda that precedent that we wanna go back on. And so, you know, try to think of the big issues that we, that I've seen in the last couple of years. And then, you know, as well as talking to other ADs and talking with Mr. M. and the coaches and just situations that we've had, tried to address a lot of those. You know, so you guys have had a chance to look at that. I don't know if you guys have any questions on it or anything, but I feel like it's a pretty thorough overview of things that need to be covered and, but I'm open to any feedback if anybody has any.
Classify just like your other handbooks, so what are the changes? And you got a first reading going here, we haven't got a chance to thoroughly vet it, you know, encourage you to read through it, but I've been through it. I mean, I've seen more than one, and it's very representative, so you did a nice job with, you know. In these situations, you bank borrow and steal. I mean, this isn't about creating, you know, anything of your own. So, you know, whatever people are doing, you apply it to what, what fits you or what mess fits you, so.
And I had a question on the state tournament policy.
Yeah.
I know it alludes a lot toward sports, and I get that, but what about HOSA or FFA? FFA now has a state convention, so how does that apply toward them?
Yeah, well, that's a good question. I guess that's something that we haven't really tackled yet as far as the number.
What's that one? Now, what do you mean, okay, I'm sorry, I was-
What we have, I noticed here, when- What we have, I noticed here when we talked about state tournaments.
State tournament, okay. That's what I'm looking through.
And we're talking, you know, again, the normal stuff of volleyball, basketball, so on and so forth, but what about FFA has state convention?
Like what's paid for, you mean, and like what do the kids get? Yeah, that makes sense to me.
I mean, it's still an activity.
Yes, absolutely.
Unless, unless we're not qualified.
So how we've, how we've handled the different situations.
And it's not, I don't interrupt you, Craig, but I mean, we have HOSA too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have HOSA, FCC LA, FB LA, yeah.
I'm just asking the question, because it's still activities.
Well, here's how we've handled it in the past, as far as we've still provided the buses, we pay for busing for all of that.
Okay.
Okay. The only thing we don't pay for is the state meals, because what we've done is it's got to be qualified. Well, everybody gets to go. So we've never done it, state meals, that's about the only thing we haven't followed compared to everything else. We pay for the hotel rooms, but we pay for the busing to those. But we've never given them state meal money, because it's always based on qualifying, that's based on South Dakota High School Activities Association activities.
They don't qualify, there's no state meal money. In this situation, in those club aspects, when HOSA goes, they're all going.
All 50 FCC LAers go to every state convention. They don't have to qualify to go, they're going. That's why we've had the difference, because you take 50 kids, times, I mean, you thought volleyball meal money was expensive. You see what I mean? That's why we haven't done it, because one is not a South Dakota High School Activity Sponsored Sport. So all-state chorus, we pay for.
Yeah, I was just going to ask about that, yeah.
All-state band.
That's a South Dakota High School Activities Association sanctioned event. Does that make sense? Those state events, we pay for the meal monies. FFA, FB LA, HOSA, FCC LA, we don't pay for their meal monies. That's the only thing. We do do the bus, and we pay for the hotels. They don't have to raise for those. The only thing they have to raise for is their registration piece, because, you know, football doesn't have a registration when they go, but they do. Some of them do, some of them don't.
So there's several things that we have here.
And then, does that help, John, explain the difference?
Maybe you can list the groups, or like who would be qualified, or, yeah, so people understand that.
Distinction between clubs.
That's what we've followed in.
So this will be at, like the meetings that you have, and the parents will sign, and the students signs, and?
Yeah, so what I do is probably link it to our athletic registration.
Oh, sure, yeah.
And just link that, and then they'll check a box saying, yes, I read it and agree to it, and that type of thing.
That'll be good.
We don't have to hand out all the paper, but yeah, I'll have some there just in case, too.
So we'll wait to adopt this till next term or December?
At the first reading.
Yeah, I'll add some of that stuff, thank you.
Thank you. All right. I call one over his, right? So we don't need to go over his?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so we'll move to G. Request for the PSD to sanction softball. The school board will consider the request to submit an application to the South Dakota High School Sports Association, Athletic Association to participate in the sport of softball for the 23, 24 school year. So we heard them, you just wanted to have a conversation, correct? Because we got all the information already?
Any questions or comments, or any clarification?
Do you guys have questions or comments or thoughts, or?
As I understood it, all they're seeking is the application and put school district's name on it, which officially does not have to be submitted to the Activities Association for consideration to play in the spring of '24 until October. Then it goes in front of the November, or the board in front of them at the November meeting. So, yeah, I mean.
So if they did a co-op, do we have to have that decision before they can put a name to it, don't they? That's what I was, that didn't.
What do you mean, put a name to it?
Well, because if they do a co-op, then that was what I didn't know.
Then you, once you've done that, then you have to go fill out all the paperwork on both school districts and go through that, I don't know, probably seven or eight pages worth of cooperative agreements, and then the numbers, and create that component of it. So does this have to be decided first? Not necessarily. I mean, if the decision was, if you waited a month or two months or whatever, and they go, you know, have a conversation with a different school district, we enter into a conversation with a different school district and say, okay, let's put both our entities together, then you just pursue that whole process with a cooperative agreement. So, and submit that application.
I guess for me, I mean, it doesn't change anything for us. We don't, we're not paying for it, so I guess I'm not opposed to it. I think it's totally fine from my perspective. John, what did it do?
Yeah, I had Mr. McKinnon put some numbers together, just in case that was.
We did sit down in front of you, you were curious as to what potential costs could be down the road, about startup cost. I think Craig helped with that. I think Bonholm, no, Bonholm, but Hanson, Beersford, and Wagner?
Yes, those three responded. I knew those three managers would respond quickly. I didn't ask Bonham's, I could get theirs too. These, a lot of things weren't finalized yet because of the state tournament.
That's why you're going to see inconsistencies.
Yeah. But it gives you an idea of, you know, what they budgeted, except for Beersford hadn't, didn't actually have the budget in yet, because they were going to make it as a supplemental budget at the end of junior. So they just went through and started paying for stuff, and, and that's why there's no budgeted numbers there when they sent me their accounting queries. And as you can see, Wagner probably didn't have an idea on their budgeted numbers, because theirs were really high compared to what the actual expenditures were. And, you know, I don't know, it's, nobody really had the travel included yet. That line item, I guess, was, and everybody's different. Hanson, I know they said they took the 15-passenger van and another van to every event. Beersford said they just tracked it a different way and didn't have that in the accounting query. And Wagner didn't have umpires' hour travel in there, so I didn't understand why. Yeah. But then the Beersford one, umpires-wise, that was skewed, because they had a turn, what Mr. Semler said about one of those tournaments? They had a tournament, they hosted a tournament, and that's why their numbers were high there compared to Hanson's especially. And Wagner's, I have no idea what theirs was, because they didn't send it. So, but they hosted an eight-team tournament, which I'm sure they paid quite a bit for there. He said the officials won't be that high next year if they don't do that. If they do it, but they also gained some revenue on that too, because they charged admission and they charged entry fees for that tournament as well.
Matt?
Well, I have no issue if it's not going to cost anything, but that is how gymnastics started 10 years ago, so. But as of now, I have no issue if it's no cost.
How long has high school baseball been going on? And they're still doing it on their own?
Ever since I got here.
That's what I was just curious about.
Club baseball in the state of South Dakota is probably the better mark of 15, it's on the north side of 15 years.
Sure.
Right add.
But there is no club softball group?
Not anymore.
No.
Because of this.
Right now.
Why?
I don't like what it's doing to the summer numbers, but I guess it's the new trend, I guess.
But the summer numbers when Breaux played too, there was probably only four teams in the league at that time. That was eight.
I think that ebbs and flows with respect to interest of the kids.
Yeah.
The reason why baseball is kind of authoritative is the powers-to-be that run that club organization at the baseball level, they really don't want to give that up, because when you give it up, and the South Dakota High School Activities Association takes over, then there's a lot of things that are, the accountability-wise, changes that they don't, that they don't want to see changed. So we'll see.
Okay, so we're, I think we're all in agreement that we're good with that.
Yep, so what we'll do there is we'll put the paperwork together, and then, you know, we'll move forward with that, so.
Okay. All right, we will move to.
And we'll make the motion at that time when you submit the paperwork, yep, perfect.
We'll move to H. Maxwell Bar Insurance Review. The school board will be briefed on the 23 to 24 premium rates and policy changes for the district.
Mr. Maxwell, I grew up, but thanks.
All right, how's everybody doing tonight? Nice, quick meeting, right? Like they all are. So I just was talking to Pat, and I just wanted to, I guess, get in front of everybody. Obviously, the claim season last year was not good on a lot of companies. And EMC wasn't any different in their claims. EMC insures, I think, about 95% of the schools in South Dakota. So they, this year, they made a management decision and informed us that, you know, last year, we went to the $25,000 deductible, saved some premium, bumped our rates up, this and that. Well, this year's no different. They went through, and I think you have in your packet, did you put in this, the values, the statement of values? So like on our building, we bumped up to 30 million last year. That's the value. We went from like 26 up to 30. They came out and did reconstruction cost 32.7 on the building, so bumped it another 2.7 million dollars. So some of the increase, it increased, the total premium increased about $15,000 from last year, 16,000, something like that. Okay? Some of that is, is the total insured values. Our total insured value last year, after we bumped those, was right at about 39 million. This year, it's going to be at 42.7, I think. So we went up 3.7 million dollars in total insured value. So some of the increase, I guess the large majority of the increase this year is property. It went up because we increased values, and it also went up because of the nature of the beast, the number of losses in last year's ratio. But the biggest, the biggest change they have made is they have implemented a wind hail deductible now. So, and how they did it is they based it on total insured value, and this is across the board. It's not picking one school out over another school. It's all based on total insured value. Because we're over 40 million, our new wind hail deductibles are going to be $75,000. So.
What do you do, Mike?
25,000.
Ouch.
So.
So our deductible is 25,000, we moved that up. Now they incorporated this wind and hail component and jumped that all the way up, so it's standalone, and so it's 75.
So it's $75,000 per building, on the buildings. Now, on our policy, we have three buildings that could meet the $75,000 deductible on a wind hail event. This one, then we have the greenhouse and the equipment shed. Well, the greenhouse and the equipment shed, I, it's about what they're insured for, or roughly, is about 75,000. You know, I think the greenhouse is right at 100, and the equipment shed out there is about 85 to 90. Now, the grandstands, the lights, the football field, that's considered property in the open. And so that has the standard $25,000 deductible. If something, if wind hail would hit that, it's still 25,000, not, not the 75,000. And I told them, I said, you know, and I argued with them for quite a while. I'm like, there should be a breakoff between what the building's insured for and what, you know, what the wind hail deductible is. But they, they said this year, that's how they implemented it, and that's how they're going forward with it for this year. I did ask around to a couple other brokers, this and that, is there anything out there in the insurance world? Over here, they, they don't have any other outlets for, for schools. One broker out west had an outlet, and they got a couple quotes, but they were on a percentage deductible. So they had a 1% deductible. So 1% of your insurance or your building value is what your deductible is. So you take this building here at 32.7, you'd have a $327,000 deductible on this building. Not that it makes 75 look better, but it, it does look better than that. My hope is that we get through a couple of years here. Everybody has a couple clean years where we don't have a lot of claims, and they can get back to where we can kind of make some tweaks in there to make it more affordable. I am in the process of getting, because these, it's not just our school, it's all the schools across the state are having these wind hail deductibles. There is another carrier in Sioux Falls that we could get a look at what a buyback would be, to buy back our deductible down. So in the event of a wind hail, it'd be like a separate policy that buys that deductible back down to, say, 25,000. But I don't know if it'll be cost-effective on what that buyback is. I'm still waiting for them to get that number back to me. But that would be something we could take a look at to buy that back down. So really, the rest of, the rest of the policy, you know, the general liability, we still have a 1 million, 2 million on the general liability coverage. Business auto has a million-dollar combined single limits, and then we have, in certain vehicles, we have full coverage and stuff on, and that's something, you know, whether or not we want to look at some of those vehicles to save a little bit. But most of the vehicles, we have full coverage on our vehicles that are out on the road all the time. The inland marine, for some of you, if you don't know what inland marine is, that's our equipment that is moving out and about. It's our laptops and stuff that leave the building. It's the equipment they're using to maintain if it leaves the property. That's the sort of stuff that would be on your inland marine. The umbrella policy, we have a $4 million umbrella. So in the event we have a loss, hits that first million dollars, then we have a $4 million umbrella that would kick in at that point. If we ever got to that umbrella, there is a $10,000 retention or deductible on that if we get into that umbrella piece. The linebacker, that's what protects you guys, decisions you guys make. It's kind of like a directors and officers, if you're on other boards, this and that. It's, it protects you guys from somebody coming back and saying, well, why'd you guys make that decision, or whatever, or something happens, and now all of a sudden, they want to sue the school because it was a decision you guys made. It helps protect you guys personally from that, so they don't go after you personally.
Mike, is that, is that about where most schools are at?
For.
The linebacker?
Let me look here.
Yep. Pretty standard in the industry.
And I believe the umbrella does fall under that linebacker as well, so it does give you that more protection. And then really, the cyber solutions, that's just in the event that the secured information, social security, date of birth, if that would ever get hacked, to protect, you know, the school and help guide the school. In a cyber situation, it's not so much about people getting money or this and that. It's the notifications that the employer or that particular company is to notify people that there's been a hack, and then to protect, help protect their, the integrity of the school, and also get things cleaned up and get things straightened out on the personal side. Make sure they're notified, and then if there's any credit monitoring and stuff like that, that's where it comes into play. On the property side, do you guys have questions about that, or just, I guess, any discussion on that? Really, they don't, we don't have a lot of options with that. I really think it's.
EMC is the only player, so it's not like you can go ask somebody else, because there is nobody else to ask.
Does that 75 apply to personal property, like last year when the track long pit stuff, when that went blowing away, is that?
It's winded.
Is that 75, or is that the 25?
I will, well, if that's out in the open, that might be considered property out in the open, so I, I think that might be 25 when it's sitting outside. Yeah.
Because we would, it's 25, that didn't cost that.
Yeah, those are right at about, right at about 25. Yeah.
The inland marine, do we use that much, or do we have claims on that much?
No, not really.
I have in front of me, is that, does that cost much, or is it?
The inland marine is.
860 dollars.
Never mind.
Yes.
Here's the breakdowns. It's your commercial property.
The property is.
Almost set 68,000. That's of your $91,000 of your premium, 61 of it is.
Three years ago, it was 48.8.
Yeah, total.
Total.
Yeah. I think five years, I was looking back, I think five years ago, I think our building value, I think our building was at about 13 million.
But it was maybe undervalued.
It was undervalued.
Right, but it, they, the building values have jumped considerably, because I, when, when did White Lake build their school? Was that about, about five, six years ago? I think they built their school. For, I think, about 5 million when they built their school. And now it would probably be about 13 million, or 15 million, whatever. So the, the values have really driven, obviously, the premium up. I said, you know, it. obviously, the premium up. I said, you know, I guess to put it in perspective, for, for a million dollars of coverage, it's about sixteen, fifteen, sixteen hundred dollars for a million dollars of coverage. So, you look at, it, it's different than a home, or this or that, but a million dollars of coverage on a home, for, if you could insure it for sixteen hundred dollars, would be, would be fairly reasonable. We're just, the numbers are starting to get so big on replacement costs on these structures, that that's where the, the value, or the premiums really grow, just because of the values of replacing it.
Well, it's just the industry. I mean, we just lived it. You know, I mean.
So when you put it that way, too, that's a good parasympathy. Your home at a million dollar home for only sixteen hundred dollars, that's pretty.
Yeah, right. And I tell you, a lot of schools, I mean, obviously, we made the move last year to jump to the twenty-five thousand dollar deductible because of what our total insured value is. You know, you, you think about it, if you're insuring and have a total insured value of thirty million or forty million dollars, and you've got a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible, where most people have that on their home for three hundred thousand, or four hundred thousand. So it does put it somewhat into perspective. Now, could they have went a little bit different, about jumping to seventy-five thousand wind and hail? I think they could have, or gradually made that increase. But that's, and, and it might not just be their decision, it might be the reinsurance decision on saying, with the number of losses we have, and the size of losses, you have to go to this at the, for the wind hail deductibles. So. Yeah. Are there any other questions in regards to some of that, kind of a quick synopsis? But those are the, the main thing is just the, I wanted to let you guys know about the wind hail deductibles, and then also some of the valuation changes, so. And then, would it need to add that? I mean, we won't need to add that property on until it's completed to the total value, but I'm guessing on this building alone, if you had to replace the whole roof on the whole thing, you'd probably be at about a million, wouldn't you, or?
The armory in of itself costs us a hundred and ten. And that was just to put a new membrane down. That had nothing to do with rafters, or holes, or gaps, or anything like that.
Right.
If you had to replace a portion of this roof, any portion of it, you're easily a million.
So what'd you budget, Craig?
Not that much. Not yet.
Not yet. Yeah, this is going forward, so.
Yep. So, and I can get those numbers, and I'll get them to Pat, and get them out for what the deductible buyback is, but, I mean, being cost-effective, yeah, I, I don't know what those numbers will be, or how expensive that would be to, you know, to buy it back to fifty thousand, get twenty-five thousand dollars of coverage. If it costs ten thousand dollars, is it really worth the, unless you knew it was gonna hail, or have a big storm, or something, and you were gonna collect on it, but other than that, it's.
Now, the wind and hail damage, that's on, that's on the building. What about vehicles?
Nope, that's still the.
Same old.
Thousand dollar comp and collision, so, yep, that stuff is all, that stays the same. Yep. So, it's pretty much the three buildings that would be the.
Involved.
The seventy-five thousand on those.
You don't see any wiggle room?
Well, the only wiggle room would be up the other deductible, but, you know, I mean, as far as wiggle room with, they're.
Premium values, with the whole nine yards, is what it is, right?
Unfortunately, it is what it is. You know, we got, we got our premium savings, if we got anything last year, when we bumped up to the twenty-five thousand across the board, but I even looked at another school where, you know, they bumped, they were in the lower bracket of total insured value, so their wind hail deductible is fifty, but they're at a twenty-five hundred dollar deductible, and even jumping up to a five and a ten thousand dollar deductible is like, they'd save a thousand bucks. So, they obviously know the risk is wind and hail in South Dakota. As far as claims percentage-wise, that's gonna be your, I mean, could you have a fire? Yes, you could. But the odds are, wind and hail are gonna be your main losses, right, Scott? So, but yeah, unfortunately, there is not a lot of wiggle room, or even ways to really make adjustments in that. I don't feel you probably want to lower, I mean, they're pretty much telling us this is where we need to be on our building value. So.
You're not going backwards on the value, because if you had a disaster, you, you, when I first came two years ago and saw the number, I'm like, in a way and world, we'd even pay for a portion of this for what it was insured at. You need to stay there.
You can't under insure.
No, and you were, in my opinion.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. If you guys have any questions, feel free to shoot me an email, or give me a call, if you have any questions on that. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Alright, we will move to action items. Action item A is to approve financial report. School board will review the May financial report for discussion and approval.
Anything, Mr. Henry?
It is what it is?
Yeah.
It is what it is?
Sorry. We'll make an adjustment. One thing I'll point out is the enterprise fund, that's negative. That would be negative even more, because we have no more revenue coming in, but yet, we still gotta, what do I call it, expense the teacher's salary out for the rest of the year, you know, through August thirty-first on that, so that will actually go negative even more. But that is, it was planned, I mean, we don't charge enough for preschool to cover the whole teacher, so the difference will be taken out of the general fund with an adjusting entry at the end of the year, which is budgeted at, I think, thirty-four thousand even, total in that deal, but seventeen or thirty, I can't remember off the top.
In two weeks, when you balance the budget, it'll be out.
So, but that one is negative. Unfortunately, well, good thing, bad thing, whichever you want to look at, food service is still not going down. There will be probably, there will be a few more expenditures with salary-wise coming out here from that, without really any more revenue. So, but we'll see what it's like at the end, but it'll be, come up with some ways to be creative next year. So, that's a good thing for, for our students, though, and our, our parents.
Should we find out if that floor scrubber could be expensed out of there?
No.
Anyway?
Any other questions? And those are the two gleaming things that I had noticed.
Anything else?
It was after, yeah, but, I mean, when you look at it compared to the last few years, too, pretty good. So that's a good sign.
We need that in motion to approve.
Move by Paul and second by Sean Felder, to approve the financial statement. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All same sign, motion carried.
Alright, we'll move to action item B, is approved safe return to school plan. The school board will approve the safe return to school plan required by S R three for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. We see a motion to approve.
Move by Lashner, second by Sean Felder. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All same sign, motion carried.
Alright, and action item C is to approve consolidated application. The school board will approve the application for the federal programs that govern the district's title programming. See a motion to approve. So moved.
Move by Neeble, second by Paul. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All same sign, motion carried.
Alright, we have reached executive session, so we'll take a five-minute-ish recess in the third room, and come back for personnel executive session.
Pretty great, is that good?
Yeah.
So back into session at ten, eleven. You don't need me, you can grab her. She's just right outside the door, Pat.
Can we just do the busing one?
Yeah, let's do the busing one real quick.
So, you just want me to read this?
Sure.
The Board of the, of the Parkson School District hereby agrees to the sale and transfer of the school bus service operated by BJ School Buses Incorporated for the Parkson School District. The new owner will be K and D Bussing of Miller, South Dakota. K and D Bussing agrees to operate school bus service according to the existing contract between BJ School Buses Incorporated and the Parkson School District. Let me sign this out.
Need a motion for that, in a second.
Yeah.
Motion. So moved.
Move by Turinger, second by Sean Felder. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All same sign, motion carried.
Alright, excuse me. And then the last thing we need to do is approve the contract for Crystal Travis.
Work agreement.
A work agreement. Do you want to read it?
Yep, I can do it. Approve the work agreement for Crystal Travis for advanced student teacher assignment at Old Elm Colony at a hundred and fifty-six dollars per day until certificate is obtained.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Move by Lashner, and seconded by Neeble. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All same sign, motion carried. Give him a motion to.
Oh, I beat you.
Move by Neeble, and seconded by Sean Felder, adjourned at ten-thirty. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. All same sign, motion carried.